Good afternoon. We will kick off this 3:00 PM, July 22nd, city council meeting here. I will call to order this meeting. We will hop on this crazy train together and we'll start off with an invocation by our city manager, Mr. Aaron Adams. If everyone can please stand. Would you please bow your head? Dear me Father, Lord, we give you thanks for this day. We give you thanks for the great privilege it is to live and work in the city of Temecula. Lord, we pray for our community. We lift them up, people that are hurting, the least, the last, the lost, Lord. We pray for them. Lord, I pray for our first responders, our police and fire, emergency management personnel, Lord, that you just continue to protect them as the safeguard to this great city. And, Lord, I pray over the city council for wisdom, for discernment in the agenda, in the challenges, and the issues and the items that we're wrestling with. Lord, help them just to continue to make solid and positive change and decisions. And we ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen. If you could all stand and face the flag, place your right hand over your heart and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam City Clerk, we have a roll call, please.
Yes, Councilmember Alexander.
Here.
Mayor Kalfis.
Here.
Councilmember Ron.
Here.
Councilmember Schwenk.
Here.
Councilmember Stewart.
All right, today we have no internal presentations. We will kick it off with our board and commission report. We have our planning commissioner here, Mrs. Turley Trejo.
Hi, good afternoon. And I am going to report on three different meetings since we didn't have a city council meeting the second meeting of June. So bear with me, I will do it as succinctly as I can. For those out in the audience and those listening, we have five on our planning commission. Our vice chair is Gary Watts. And the next person that you see there is Fernando Solis, Bob Hagel, and our newest member, Mark Watson. And I'm the chair, Lenee Turley Trejo. So our planning commission, we serve as a designated statutory planning agency for the city and we review and make recommendations on different topics with subdivisions, specific plans, zone changes, plot plans, and we conduct legally required public hearings. We have those on the first and the third Wednesday of every month at 6:00 PM here. Next slide, please. And our last meeting was last week, on the 16th. At our June 4th meeting, we reviewed amendments to titles 5, 8, 16, and 17 of the municipal code as part of the staff's code maintenance that they do annually. There were no public speakers and we voted 5-0 on this to recommend the city council to approve these code amendments. Also, at the June 4th meeting, we reviewed finding a public convenience or necessity for an ABC type 21, which is an off-sale general license, liquor license for 88 Ranch Marketplace, which is located in the Terra Plaza Inez Road. And there were no public speakers for this item and we voted 5-0 to approve the application. Next slide. Also, at the June 4th meeting, which is exciting, we reviewed an amendment to the Temecula Valley Hospital Plan Development Overlay District and a modification to the TVH development plan and conditional use permit on Temecula Parkway. There were no public speakers for this item and we happily approved 5-0 on this application. At our last, or at the June 18th meeting, the commission reviewed a development plan for Mercedes-Benz Sprinter dealership that includes maintenance and repair services and is located at Inez and Temecula Center Drive. There were no public speakers for the item and the commission voted 4-0 to approve the application. And then at our last meeting, we had several items. The first one was a home product review application for Somers Bend for planning areas 10, 12, and 33A. And there were no public speakers for these items and we voted to approve all three applications, 5-0. Next slide. Also, at our last meeting, we reviewed a development plan for an approximately 38,653 square foot, three-story medical office building that's on Avenida de Misiones, which is right off of Temecula Parkway. And there were two emails and one public speaker for this application stating concerns and they live condos on the other side of this building. And these concerns were addressed by the staff and to our satisfaction as a commission. The commission voted 5-0 to approve the application. And it's a nice building, excited about it. And I think that's it. Any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. We will move on to our public safety report with our fire chief crater.
Good afternoon, mayor, council, staff, and Temecula residents. For the month of June 2025, Temecula Fire Department ran 118 emergencies in the city limit, 10 of those being fires, 66 traffic collisions, and 330 medical emergencies. And year-to-date, 5,163 calls. And that's all I have to report out. Thank you.
Thank you very much, chief. Any questions or comments from my colleagues? All right, we will move on to public comments on non-agenda items. Madam City Clerk, do we have any public comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we do have seven public comments on non-agendized items. Each speaker has three minutes and all additional rules are reflected in the agenda. First speaker is Laurel Lamont, to be followed by Kimberly Wall.
Welcome.
Hi, I just want to talk about accountability. And, you know, where we stand on accountability. I think we can all agree that we have issues with the state of California and its governance and maybe how it spent its homelessness dollars. It gave a lot to a nonprofit with very little results. We can't address accountability above ourselves unless we address accountability within ourselves. And this city and its past council approved millions of dollars of RDA funds that went to affordable housing in Old Town. And until I came on the scene, until I came into the picture, the building that I reside in illegally charged tenants for parking. That was never going to be addressed unless I went in, read the documents, and brought it to light. But that's trivial to the code enforcement or lack thereof with the building development. There is no dryer vents, at least in one unit, which meant for the last, since 2010, that laundry unit has been blowing its dryer excess into that apartment. The resident that lived there just inhaled that. I don't know what that looks like legally. There's no plumbing cleanouts, so when sewage backs up, it backs up into the apartments, all in the name of affordable housing. How much did it actually cost to build that development? Do we have any receipts? Because I can't find any. And what it appears is that we took state funding and gave a developer a debit card. He built, probably at the cost in which he received, the $6 million. They, he, she, whatever pronoun we're using for this entity of developer, and then just profited off of the rent. He didn't buy down doors. We bought a developer that cut corners in its development, all in the name of affordable housing, and receives full market rent on its commercial real estate. Where are the answers to my emails? Where are the answers to this and how many more buildings have these same issues? Let's fix this, because if you haven't noticed, I'm not going anywhere.
Thank you. The next speaker is Kimberly Wall, to be followed by Scott Rieger, or Riger, sorry.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, I am Kimmy Wall, I'm the Public Affairs Manager for Rancho Water and I'm bringing you some fun news. We have an exciting event coming up on Saturday, August 16th. It's Rancho Water's 60th Anniversary Splash Fest. Again, it's on the August 16th from 2:00 to 7:00 PM and it's going to be at our district office in Temecula. This family-friendly event is going to mark 60 years of service for Rancho Water for our community and we're celebrating with an afternoon full of fun and family-friendly activities, many that are free. You'll enjoy live music from Ash Easton and The Proper and Cornelius Blue, plus food trucks, vendors, and even gardening demonstrations. Be sure to bring the family because we have lots of activities such as petting zoo, gem mining station, crafts and games, and a touch-a-truck station for kids of all ages. So we hope to see you there. We're also going to have free giveaways and prizes. This event is open to the public, so everybody is invited, is completely free to attend, and we hope that you will join us to commemorate six decades of service in this community. We are proud to have been here and we would be honored to have you celebrate with us for this special occasion. So thank you and we hope to see you and your family and friends on Saturday, August 16th. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Scott. Welcome, Scott, to be followed by Ruben Elalstil.
Thank you, thank you. Good afternoon, council members and staff. I'm Scott Rieger and I'm here today as a board member of the Temecula Valley Rose Society and our beloved Rose Haven Heritage Garden. If you haven't been to the garden lately, I hope you do so. It's, our spring bloom was beautiful, we've had lots of visitors for photographs, proms, weddings, and simply for the peace and beauty that the garden provides. As you know, Rose Haven is not owned or operated by the city. We are a nonprofit organization entirely volunteer-driven and donations-supported. Our volunteers put in thousands of hours of time a year. Our 3.4-acre garden is home to about 2,000 roses, as well as 24 separate gardens within the garden. Thousands of people enjoy Rose Haven each year, including our newest addition, the Rebecca Weersing Pollinator Garden. Our Tree of Life Produce Garden delivers over 500 pounds of produce for local banks, food banks each year. We conduct or host a variety of educational programs for children and the general public. Rose Haven is a member of the American Public Gardens Organization and a certified wildlife sanctuary recognized by the National Wildlife Federation. I'm sure you can agree that Rose Haven Heritage Garden is a valued asset that adds to the quality of life in Temecula. Next year marks our 35th anniversary and we are committed to maintaining the garden for the next 35 years and beyond. In support of our efforts, we have engaged with the city of Temecula at various levels to strengthen our relationship. The reception's been very positive and we thank you. Community Services is highlighting Rose Haven as a painting site in the 2025 Ralph Love plein air contest. We've met with economic development and the city manager's office to explore potential community service grant funding and we will be applying for a grant for erosion control in the garden this year. Public Affairs is now advising on soil management and erosion control. We'll be seeking meetings with Mayor Kalfis and Mayor Pro Tem Alexander to share more about our plans and see how we can collaborate with the city further. We will be conducting a ribbon-cutting ceremony of our 35th anniversary in October of '26 and hope Mayor Pro Tem Alexander can join us then. As you know, the rose is the official flower of the city of Temecula. We look forward to working with you and the city to provide this lovely sanctuary to residents and visitors of Temecula.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your time and consideration.
The next speaker is Ruben, to be followed by Hallie Wolf.
Afternoon.
Hello, my name's Ruben Elalzalday and I'm here on an issue that's more important than your roses, more important than other things you're going to talk about. It's the water. I live downhill and last Thursday, I noticed the water was coming down. I don't usually make a big deal about it because usually it'll stop. Well, I kept an eye on it. Thursday, it ran, Friday it ran, Saturday it ran, Sunday it ran, Monday it ran, and it's still running today. Had I noticed, I might have noticed it was running a couple of days before, but I didn't really pay attention to it. So I called Rancho Water, I am so glad you're here. I called Rancho Water and talked to representative and told them the situation and they said they were going to bring somebody out and identify what was going on. I said, "Fine." Well, day later, nothing, day after that, nothing. So I called again and the representative said, "Oh, you're the person I called before." I go, "Yes, I am." And what I was told was that it wasn't Rancho's problem, they had no pipe breakage or anything like that, that it probably was a residential. I went to go look at it, I've looked at it twice, and it's the water system that goes between the homes that you really can't see. But if you look at the street, the water's coming right through there, through the, I want to say sewer, but that's not correct. And so it's been coming down through there ever since. And basically Rancho said, "We can't do anything about that." I go, "What do you mean, can't you turn off the water?" She said, they said, "No." And I said, "Why can't you just go in there, turn off the water?" And she goes, "Well, we have to notify." Well, then notify them. Bottom line is, they have nothing to say about it. And I'm a little upset about that, especially when I said the roses don't count. We're not going to have any water. You know, there's a major country that has a major capital now that is coming, running out of water. Now, they don't have what we have, but it's the idea. We're going to be in that same situation. And I don't care about politics, I don't care about anything, I don't care. If you don't take care of the water, the water will take care of us. That's the bottom line. Everything depends on water and I've seen this over and over and over again. The bottom line is, you need to go to Rancho and tell them a couple of things. One thing I don't like about coming up here is people don't come up here with solutions. "Well, I've got your solution." And this is what you're going to do if you have enough guts to do it. You're going to call Rancho and you're going to tell them, "You are to fix that damn water leak." And anybody else, you're going to send out new paperwork to every person who gets water from Rancho.
Thank you, sir, your time is up. Thank you, Ruben. We do have your contact information, sorry, your time is up, sir.
You don't want the solution, that's okay, no problem, bye-bye.
We will contact you, sirs.
Oh, not a question, just a statement. You can make a statement. Ruben.
Ruben, can you come on back for me?
We just have a statement for you.
Just a statement, we definitely will get back with you. Since we have your information, we'll definitely keep moving. I appreciate you coming out, sir. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Hallie Wolf, to be followed by Vivica Ross.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'm just coming to introduce myself and this nonprofit organization that I brought to town about four years ago. My name is Hallie Wolf and I'm a mother of three. I have a high schooler in the area and my nonprofit's called His Little Feet. And basically this last week, maybe some of you were down at the conference room, but we had a huge back-to-school event for the children in our area that are either facing poverty or homelessness. And so basically, my solution is through footwear for children. There's a lot of resources for clothing and food and all kinds of good things, but 11 years ago, I founded His Little Feet based off of a statistic that I found that kids that don't have proper shoes, that are living in poverty, don't get to school. And so His Little Feet, our mission is to share God's love and uplift underprivileged youth with new socks and shoes. And so thank you to everybody that allowed us to use the building this week on Thursday. We worked with roughly a dozen different businesses in the area and brought free haircuts for the children, we brought backpacks full of school supplies. There was 100 kids that signed up and 119 kids that showed. And so there's 119 kids that would not have the funds to get what they need to start school with that do in our city. And so I just wanted to introduce myself and let you know that we will be applying for grants and we hope to work with you in the future. And footwear is transportation for our kids that have a hard time getting rides or would have to ride a bus or to get to school. Lots of issues within these families, but footwear is like transportation and I am just here advocating for our youth to make sure that attendance stays up and these kids are able to stay healthy and happy with the shoes that they need. Thank you.
Thank you, amazing program. Next speaker.
Thank you. The next speaker is Vivica Ross, to be followed by our last speaker, Jonathan Fiestra.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon. It appears that we all seem to have our problems, but I purchased a home here in 1998. I live north of Temecula Parkway and east of Butterfield State Road. As you can see, I'm handicapped. You guys have, or the city has provided, a sidewalk on De Portola, as well as a horse walk. But you have not provided a sidewalk for me to get to the store. And I have called down here and asked why there has not been a sidewalk put in on Butterfield State Road so that I can get to the store. Well, now they're telling me, "Well, we're putting housing up, so maybe we might put a sidewalk up." In the meantime, I'm expected to use the street, which is not to my benefit. In fact, it's a safety hazard. On top of that, I've had teachers stop to pick me up off the ground because the street sweepers do not sweep that road. The streets are horrible. I don't know where the money goes to for street repairs, but whoever repairs them or whoever's responsible to go back and check to see what was completed or if it's safe, it's not being done. So I would like to know who is responsible in my district, where I live, for those streets over there not being able to provide a safe environment or safety for me to get to the store. I can't drive. So who is my councilman?
I think it's straight ahead of you, me.
Okay. I believe I've called your office several times and I have gotten, not gotten the response that I want. I'm going to call again and leave my name and I expect a call from you and I expect something to be done to provide safety for me to get to and from that store for a handicapped person. And once again, I've been here since 1998, no sidewalk. That's unacceptable. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have your contact information, I believe, is our phone number on there?
Yes.
You will receive a phone call from me today.
Thank you very much.
Next speaker, please.
Thank you. And our last speaker is Jonathan Fiestra.
Welcome, Jonathan.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. The U.S. Open of tennis, Queens, New York. The U.S. Open of golf, Oakmont, Pennsylvania. The U.S. Open of surfing, Huntington Beach, California. The U.S. Open of speed golf, Temecula, California. Okay? Good afternoon, mayor, council members, and Temecula residents. Though some of you may have seen me playing music around town and known me as John Dutch, my actual name is Jonathan Fiestra, founder of Speed Golf Temecula, one of the largest groups of its kind in the world. I'm here with an exciting announcement that puts Temecula in the national spotlight. This fall, Temecula Creek Golf Club will host the 9th Annual United States Speed Golf Open, the biggest speed golf event in the country, one of the premier championships in the world. We're talking about elite athletes from across the United States, Europe, Asia, and beyond, all coming right here to Temecula to compete for a national title. Speed golf is a fast-paced, high-endurance sport that combines the precision of golf with the intensity of running. Picture someone playing 18 holes in 45 minutes. And I know, I know, you're asking, "Well, what do they shoot in 45 minutes?" With only three to five clubs in their hand, the winner of this event will play close to even par in 45 minutes. It's thrilling to watch and even more exciting to be a part of. The event runs over two days with multiple divisions for all ages and skill levels, making this not just a championship, but a community celebration of fitness, of fun, and innovation in sport. Temecula's going to be showcased on an international stage, bringing in tourism, visibility, and local business support. We're proud to offer a $5,000 cash purse, awards for top finishers, and a weekend that highlights the beauty and energy of our city. So we invite you, the whole Temecula community, to come out, cheer on these athletes, and experience the future of golf right here in our own backyard. We do need volunteers, we could use some sponsors, maybe a couple generous homestay hosts for our international competitors, and as many spectators to cheer on these incredible athletes. Let's show the world what Temecula can do. Thank you so much. For more info, @speedgolftemecula on Instagram, @speedgolftemecula@gmail.com. Thank you, guys, any questions?
Jonathan, if you could, before you took off, could you just put that on the projector so those at home can see? If you lift that up.
Like this?
All the way up, put that under there.
Boom.
Let's see, we can zoom out a little bit, we got a little knobby twist, there it is.
There we go.
That way those watching on YouTube can see that.
That works.
Perfect.
All right, Brandon came out last year, we did a little festival and it's grown into the U.S. Open, so hope to see you guys out there. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please. That will do it, all right. We will move on to our city council reports. Councilmember Stu.
I got nothing, I just spent two weeks in, well, eight days in Illinois, so I have been missing in action for a little bit, so I'm good.
Looked like a great trip. Councilmember Ron?
Nothing for me, but I'm going to take a shot in the dark and say our city manager needs to be part of that speed golf tournament, so.
Councilmember Schwenk.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple slides, if we go and put up the first slide. So, summer food service program is in full swing and for those that don't know, the summer food service program is an extension of the school lunch program, which enables the city to partner with the USDA and the State Department of Education to provide free nutritionally-balanced meals to children 18 years and under, as well as individuals with disabilities. This is a critical community service during the summer for families who depend on free and reduced school lunches during the school year. And city staff takes great pride in preparing approximately 130 delicious meals daily, Monday through Friday, and serving them at Michael Mike Nigar Park. The team this year has served over 3,000 meals and anticipates serving about over 5,000 by the end of summer. And the city does get reimbursed for this from the state, which is just absolutely wonderful. So the cost of providing lunches is reimbursed, including admin time as well. I've been out there a couple times, you know, serving lunches, which is just super awesome. I was out there again today, it's like nice, we had a little break for lunch, so I went over there. But I wanted to take this time to thank the human services team that's out there. So, you know, our community services manager, Avet Martinez, Cecilia Solis, and Amaya Juarez, and then we have some interns, Kyle, Josefina, and Vanessa. They just do an extremely solid job. And you're seeing the interactions out there, I just, like, for me, this is all about building community and we're really creating a space where people can come and enjoy, you know, their family and friends. And, you know, the few days that I've been there, you see the same faces and these little kids run up and they're just super pumped. I know you've all volunteered and done it, so you'll know what it's like, just the excitement. And then the bonds between the team members that are out there in the park and the kids and the families that are there really builds trust. I was saying yesterday, I'm like, "We're building trust one burrito at a time," right? Like, every burrito that we serve, we're building trust in government because this is a government service to, you know, our most vulnerable citizens. So I just wanted to highlight that and thank that. And then, before we move on from this, and maybe I'm spilling the tea on this, but employee wellness is doing, so the city of Temecula Employee Wellness is doing a school supply drive, I believe, is what it would be technically called. And so they're internally collecting supplies, which reminded me, when, you know, you came up and spoke about, you know, school supplies and whatnot, like, it reminded me of, like, that need. And so they're collecting internally supplies that the last week of the summer food service program, they're going to give the kids that come to get free lunches, they're going to get, like, school supplies, which is starting up, like, you know, like, a week later or whatever. So kudos to the city's well- wellness team and just all the good work they're doing. So I wanted to say thanks to them for that. So, next slide? So I was down in Old Town. Actually, I peeked into some of the antique places when I heard they were closing down. I wanted to come down and see what was going on, but I was watching some interaction related to parking at the theater and was having a conversation with a woman. I thought she was, you know, from out of town. Turns out, she's part of the Temecula Valley Women's Club and she's been around forever and, you know, whatever. But I started, like, thinking about, you know, well, the city lots and, you know, where do we have parking? So I kind of touched base with Director Russo and they were actually working on this map for outreach. So I just wanted to highlight this free parking in Old Town map. And this is essentially all of the city-owned lots that we have and the number of spaces. And this will be something we'll do for outreach at the theater when we have events and things like that. Just remind people where the lots, you know, the city lots that we have free parking here in Old Town. So, next slide. Thank you. Next slide. Or it's actually next video, I think. Hey there, Temecula. I am at, I don't know what we call this. It's Nicholas Road splashpad, maybe, something like that. But I am at this splashpad at the end of Nicholas Road. Pretty small splashpad, so maybe it suits your needs, especially on some of those hot afternoons. There's a little bit of shade, some benches, things like that. It's basically across the street from, that's Nakayama Park, and then that's Joseph Park, which is a county park along Nicholas Road. So as you head east on Nicholas Road from Chaparral, come check out this little splashpad we got here. Have a great day, everybody. Take care. All right. So I wanted to highlight that because last meeting, I brought up the fact that that splashpad wasn't working, and I wanted to take the time to thank our city team, code enforcement, for getting that back online. It's a very unique splashpad. That splashpad was, is built by the developer that built Nicholas Heights Development. It was part of the agreement to build that development. Now, it's not a city park. It's privately maintained, publicly accessible, which creates some challenges, but they had had it turned off. And so I just really wanted to thank city staff for getting that turned back on. And in fact, today, when I was at the summer food service program, a couple parents came thinking the splashpad at Margarita was working. It wasn't. I'm like, oh, you can head over to Nicholas, you know, Heights, which they did. So I appreciate, appreciate that. And then, just two little thing, well, actually, I'll just do one more little thing. The comments by the Speaker Vivica about the roads, you know, I've been long in this world of mobility and bike lanes and trails and maybe staff early on in the early 2000s probably hated me at the time for all of the conversations and emails and things I had. But that's really why I do what I do with respect to mobility and making sure we have accessible places. And I know that development's coming online, so there's going to be a sidewalk there soon. But I just wanted to sort of, it made me reflect on, you know, the years that I've been doing this and the why behind why I do what I do. It's not for the group road cyclist folks. It's for the average person that's trying to get to the store, get to school. So just sort of, I wanted to take a moment to just sit on that for a minute. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Alexander?
Alrighty. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, everybody, for being here today at 3:30 in the afternoon. It was good to see a lot of different faces that probably we haven't seen. So thank you for bringing your information up and I'm very appreciative. If I can first have the first slide? Okay. So this was the mayor's internship appreciation luncheon and I had a quick opportunity to just speak to some of the interns and people who also are just doing great work here in our city. And I'm just very grateful and I was able to tell them and encourage them that if this is their passion and their area of expertise that they want to move forward and to take it, you know, take it all the way and do what they're called to do. So it was just nice to see this group wanting to continue to excel in an area that maybe they're not too sure of, but they're really doing a great job here and just very appreciative. So that was the first one. Again, here we go with his little feet. I had an opportunity to talk with Hallie and just look around to see the great work that they're doing. And I was very, very thankful. I even had an incredible opportunity, when I left Hallie, I didn't even get to talk to you about this, there was a mom who was walking out trying to find her kids. They were a little bit older and she had four kids. One of them was foster family or was adopted just recently. And I just was kind of called to figure out, how was this impactful for her and her family? Like, what does this mean? And it was right here in the corridor area and the woman started practically crying in front of me to hold things back. And it was so meaningful for her to be able to have help within this area, just like you're talking about backpacks and these things that not everybody has access to. And we ended up having a conversation with another lady earlier that day, too, about the things that she went through as a kid and being discarded because she didn't have the right kind of shoes and the right vans. And it's heartbreaking. And kids can be rotten, but that's where we get this opportunity to come alongside them and show them love where maybe they've never seen it. So I just, I want to encourage you to keep that up and encourage our council that the next time the community services grant comes up, to truly look at his little feet. Because I think what happened is, is one of the times, and correct me if I'm wrong by nodding your head, but your mailing address is outside, but your location and your brick and mortar is directly here, actually in my district. So please keep his little feet in mind. It's an incredible, incredible nonprofit. I've watched her over the years just do great work and she actually helps out tons of other profits, nonprofits here, dropping off socks and things like that for the kids. So Hallie, thank you for all your great work. My last slide here, I just wanted to give a shout out to SWAG, to all of the great work that they're doing, along with the Sheriff's Department, community services, and again, with our direction as a city council. Just to give you a little bit of an update, I had an opportunity to look at the community services, just some information that they had passed out at their last meeting, and I wanted to make sure the community heard this. So in the month of June, SWAG ended up having an opportunity to have forty-six different client contacts in just the month of June. That means there was forty-six individuals who were homeless. They engaged with ten business owners and staff ended up connecting with, I guess, on ten different occasions. For the reminder, for a 602, no trespassing letter on file to make sure they have that. What happens is, is that allows a deputy to get onto a property that maybe people aren't allowed to trespass on. So if your 602 form is not updated, please reach out to us. We want to make sure that we have access to your property if you have transients on there, or else it's gonna be much harder for us to be able to help you out. So they're doing a great job in that. Also, the homeless outreach staff discovered twelve dangerous and unhealthy encampments. Nine of them that were dangerous, unhealthy, they were able to clean up, which was incredible. I've seen them firsthand. I know several of my council members have as well. And so great work on that because that really improves on the quality of life for our city and for our residents. As well as in June, the homeless outreach staff assisted in eight vulnerable households in preventing or ending homelessness. These households included nine adults and twelve children of families. And if you don't know exactly where that funding is, is we give a total of $140,000 per year to help residents. This is not anybody outside of our area. This is Temecula residents specifically, basically trying to become a gap. So we give them three months of an opportunity to get back on their feet. And there are several other guidelines in there, but we want to make sure that Temecula is helping Temecula, that community is helping community. And so that is one of the things that we have honored and we will continue to do as a city. And I just want to say thank you again to the council because if we didn't put that money into play, we would have literally had the possibility of nine adults and twelve children homeless living in a car or somewhere on our streets. So that's a blessing and thanks to everybody and their great work. Thank you.
Thank you very much. If you could put up my first slide, please. All right. So we've been talking about community and trust within our community. I came up with this little idea in a contest that I put out on my social media, and you'll see me wearing these ties and similar ties to this one for the remainder of this year. A couple kiddos, twelve to be exact, submitted designs to be drawn onto a tie and I had them here at City Hall and they were able to participate and draw on ties just like this one. So if you see me wearing these awesome drawings for the remainder of the year, these are from our community kiddos. So they were pretty excited and it was an awesome opportunity for me to meet them and build that community and build that trust. Next slide, please. And I'm sure you've noticed all of the construction on the 15 freeway. If you see there in the photo, the blue line is the completed auxiliary lane that we completed as a city, which is northbound Temecula Parkway on-ramp to Rancho Cal off-ramp. And the orange lines on this map are the ones that Caltrans will be completing. And the estimated completion time is hopefully the end of 2026, but possibly the early 2027. So you'll see a new auxiliary lane. There's gonna be a single lane northbound 15 from Rancho Cal to Winchester. And then on the southbound side, there will be an auxiliary lane from Winchester to Rancho Cal and then from Rancho Cal to Temecula Parkway. So if you see those K rails and those barriers, those are them building an extra lane for you that travel on our freeways. And that is all I have for you. We will move on to our consent calendar. Item number one, waive reading of title and text of all ordinances and resolutions included in the agenda. Item number two, approve action minutes of July 8, 2025. Item number three, approve listed demands. Item number four, adopt ordinance number 2025-11, approving third amendment to the development agreement by and between the City of Temecula and Lennar Homes, Inc., a California corporation in Winchester's Hills, LLC, a California limited liability company, planning application number PA 25-0016. This is the second reading. Item number five, adopt resolution to establish the amount of the voter-approved Measure C Annual Special Tax Levy for fiscal year 2025-2026. Item number six, approve sponsorship agreement with Bike Temecula Valley for the Ride the Vines Halloween Bike Ride and Holiday Bike Ride at the request of Subcommittee members Alexander and Kelfus. Item number seven, approve sponsorship agreement with Inland Valley Business and Community Foundation, DBA TEDx, for TEDx Temecula at the request of Subcommittee members Alexander and myself. Item number eight, approve sponsorship agreement with JDS Creative Academy for Digi Fest Temecula 2026 at the request of Subcommittee members Alexander and myself. Item number nine, approve sponsorship agreement with Michelle's Place Cancer Resource Center for the Walk of Hope at the request of Subcommittee members Alexander and myself. Item number 10, approve sponsorship agreement with the Valley of Mist Quilters Guild for Old Town Temecula Outdoor Quilt Show at the request of Subcommittee members Alexander and myself. Item number 11, award construction contract to Assad Holding LLC, DBA, Orange Blue General Contractors for Marietta Creek Trail Solar Lights, PW 21-13. Item number 12, accept improvements and file the notice of completion for the Marietta Creek Improvements Southside Parking Lot Reconfiguration Dedicated and Known As Roger Epperson Parking Lot, PW 15-07. If any of my colleagues want to poll or discuss any items, if not, I will entertain a motion and a second.
Motion.
Second. That has been moved and seconded. Please vote. And our consent calendar passes unanimously, five to zero. I will now recess the city council meeting to the Temecula Community Services District with President Schwenk.
Thank you very much, Mayor Kelfus. I will now call to order the Temecula Community Services District meeting. Madam Secretary, please note, we're all still here. Do we have any public comments on non-agenda items? Okay, moving on to our consent calendar, we have two items. We have item 13, approve action minutes of July 8, 2025. And item 14, approve agreement with Balanced Bytes Cafe LLC for concessionaire services at Patricia H. Birdsoil Sports Park, Sports Ranch at Somers Bend, and Ronald Regan Sports Park. We'll entertain a motion and a second.
Motion. Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Let us please vote. All right. Thank you very much. That passes five-zero. We'll now move to our public hearing portion of the agenda. We have item 15, approve Temecula Community Services District proposed rates and charges for fiscal year 2025-26. May we have a staff report, please?
Good afternoon, City Council, TCSD Board. My name is Paula Majors and I serve as the Fiscal Services Manager for the City of Temecula. I am presenting on the Temecula Community Services District Service Level Rates and Charges for fiscal year 25-26. The Temecula Community Services District provides a variety of services to city residents, including residential street lighting, perimeter landscaping, slope maintenance, recycling, refuse collection, and unpaved road maintenance within the City of Temecula. These services are collectively referred to as TCSD's service levels. Property owners only pay for the services used or made available to their property through separate charges on their property tax bills, which are calculated in the engineer's annual levy report prepared by the city's consulting firm, Webb Municipal Finance, who are also available today for any technical questions. At today's public hearing, staff is requesting the board to adopt the rates and charges established for each service level for fiscal year 25-26. In accordance with Proposition 218, notices were mailed to all affected property owners forty-five days prior to today's hearing. Collectively, it is estimated that the levies will generate approximately 13.1 million in total revenue across all four service levels. Property owners may request a hardship waiver or appeal the classification of their property and must submit their request by December 1st to the city's finance department. Rates for residential street lighting are proposed to remain unchanged from the current rates of $25.68 per single-family residence per year. There are a total of 29 zones within Service Level C, which is perimeter landscaping and slope maintenance. Two of those zones have annual inflators that were previously approved through property owner elections, and the fiscal year 25-26 rates reflect the lesser of the CPI increase, or 5%. With CPI at 2.61% this year, a 2.61% increase will be applied. Rates within the remaining 27 zones will remain unchanged from the prior year. Rates for residential recycling and refuse services are calculated annually per the franchise agreement with CRNR. For fiscal year 25-26, the rate is proposed to increase $5.84 to a rate of $363.68 per household per year. The rate increase is a result of the 2.61% CPI per the franchise agreement. Service Level R, unpaved street and road maintenance, will remain unchanged from the prior year, with a levy of $115.26 per single-family residence per year and $57.62 per vacant residential property. This concludes my report and I am available for questions.
Thank you very much, Paula, for the presentation. Any questions of staff on this item? Okay. Thank you very much. I will open the public hearing. Madam City Clerk, do we have any public speakers? All right. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and open it up for comments or motion and a second.
Move approval? Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Let us please vote. All right. That passes five-zero. Thank you. Director of Community Services, do you have a report this evening?
Yes, we do. So coming up, we have another Culture Days over at Sam Hicks Monument Park. We're going to be celebrating the nation of Japan on July 25th. That's particularly significant for us because we will also be hosting our student delegation from our sister city, Dyson Japan. So we're very excited to welcome them here and to celebrate with them on that day. We are also celebrating, sorry if we can go back. There we go. Thanks. We also have Italy coming up on August 9th. And in general, our Culture Days are Saturdays from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. They're usually the first Saturdays of the month, but the July 1 is just shifted a little bit to accommodate the student delegation. Next slide, please. And then on Friday, August 1st, we'll have our monthly art walk. That's over at the lot on Main Street, which is right in front of the theater for 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. We have lots of local artisans come out and share their art with the community. It's just a great time, live music, some snacks, some refreshments. It's a really nice way to kick off your Friday evening here in Old Town. Next slide, please. And then our sports team recently restarted, I guess you would say, the old tradition of having a crosstown softball game where they basically challenged the winning team from Urieta and the winning team from Temecula Get Together and they face off. And Team Temecula won this year. We used to have this annual tradition and then it went away for a few years and the team decided to bring it back. So you can see the coveted trophy there on the side. And that concludes my report. Thank you very much. Oh, sorry, one more. Over at the museum, if you haven't had a chance to see the current exhibit, which, as most of you know, we do a rotating exhibit over at the museum. Every couple of months, we bring in a new exhibit. This one is sports photography by Walter Yost, who's a just legendary sports photographer. His work's been published in Sports Illustrated, all of the major... all of the major magazines and newspapers. And this is a celebration of his work. And I just wanted to put this up because I went over to see it, and I have to say, you know, I'm not an enormous sports fan myself, and it really doesn't matter if you're a sports fan. The photography just transcends the specific interest in the sport, and it's really about the human stories that are being represented. So I just had to give this a shout out. It was, it's just moving, incredible stories. Some of the most moving were Walter Yost spent some time in Cuba in 1999, and he highlighted some just anonymous athletes in Cuba, and the photography is just stunning. And then there were also these, you know, iconic moments from sports history as well. So highly recommend, check it out if you have a moment. That concludes my report.
Wonderful. I think I'll have to take my son to that because the biggest issue in our home is he's the GOAT. It's either Jordan or LeBron, and we're just so at odds.
There's some great pictures of Jordan in this exhibit.
Wonderful. General Manager, anything?
Yeah, Jordan's the GOAT. That concludes my report.
100%. Sorry, Jack. Board of Directors, anything?
Kobe on my side.
Oh, Kobe. All right, it's on now. All right, nothing from our Board of Directors. We'll go ahead and adjourn this meeting. I'll send it back to Mayor Kalphus. Thank you.
All right, the successor agency to the Temecula Redevelopment Agency, no meeting. Temecula Housing Authority, meeting, no meeting. Temecula Public Financing Authority, no meeting. I will call to order the Temecula Public Financing Authority. We do have a meeting. I said no meeting, but we do have a meeting for Temecula Public Financing Authority. Madam City Clerk, do we have any public comments? All right, I will move on to our consent calendar. Item number 16, authorize fiscal year 2025, 26 special tax levies for the community facilities districts. And there's a lot on there. I will entertain a motion and a second.
Second.
That has been moved and seconded. And our consent calendar for TPFA passes unanimously, five to zero. Executive Director report.
Nothing further tonight.
Board of Directors? See nothing? I will adjourn the TPFA, and I will reconvene the Temecula City Council meeting. We will move on to our public hearing. Item number 17, approve resolution adopting specific plan amendment number 12 to the Old Town Specific Plan to extend by one year the outdoor live entertainment pilot program. Can we have a staff report, please?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor. Council members, I'd like to apologize if I do yawn. I was moving yesterday, so not quite there yet as far as my energy level. But as mentioned, this is LR 250135, the Old Town Outdoor Live Entertainment Pilot Program. Okay, why are we here? We're here to evaluate the one-year pilot program that the council authorized last summer. A little bit of background on that program, kind of how it became, how it came to be. There were two joint City Council and Planning Commission workshops held in the fall of 2023 to discuss alcohol and entertainment in Old Town, as there were some issues going on related to COVID and all that kind of fun stuff. Staff, as a result of these hearings, was given direction to create a pilot program for temporary use permits to expand outdoor live entertainment seven days a week. There were other directions provided during this presentation or during the workshops, but this is going to be the sole subject of today's hearing. So a little bit of program overview, it was a one-year pilot program. It was permitted through a TUP program, which are already allowed in Old Town. It has an automatic sunset clause, which means the program will expire August 8th of this year, and it is limited to the downtown core area of the Old Town Specific Plan. Kind of our operations, what we had in mind, this being a pilot program, was kind of let's see what we don't know. It was 10:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., seven days a week. We did like, or we would have, forgive me. This was to be ancillary to the primary business with the exclusion of DJs and percussion instruments due to the residential being down there. Okay, on April 14th, staff presented information on the pilot program to the Old Town Local Advisory Committee regarding the number of permits issued and kind of just the background on what was going on that we gave you today. OTLAC overall was supportive of the program and supported extending the program another year. On June 10th, staff met with the Old Town Steering Subcommittee. Staff prevented information on the pilot program, the number of permits issued, the feedback we received from OTLAC, and then documented violations that had been occurring in Old Town. Council members at that meeting wished to speak directly with the permit holders to get their input on the program. On July 15th, again at the Old Town Steering Subcommittee, we met with the applicants, and the feedback received from the attendees and applicants focused on their concerns, specifically the application complexity, the cost of the permit, and then the noise standards, 70 decibels, being difficult or challenging to meet. As far as application complexity, I'll just kind of go down real quickly. It's a nine-page application. Two pages require information to be filled out. The remainder are, there are two pages of checklist, and the remainder are just informational. The cost of the permit is $307. At the time this was implemented, it was $300. It went up $7, $7 this past us update for this fiscal year. The noise standard, it's challenging to meet. This is kind of why we had the pilot program. We didn't know if this was going to be an option, if this was going to be possible, if it was not. Kind of one of the purposes of the pilot program, to learn. Direction coming out of the Old Town Steering Subcommittee would be to extend the program with the understanding of a three-strike revocation policy, require on-time payment of any outstanding fines, and then along quarterly updates to the Subcommittee on the Program's progress. Staff's proposal is Amendment Number 12 by Resolution to the Old Town Specific Plan, extending the temporary outdoor live entertainment program by one year. That would push it to August 8th of 2026. Additionally, staff would recommend we extend all existing TUPs authorized under these provisions to meet that same August 6th date of next year. That way, they don't have to reapply. Our sequel determination, staff has determined that this project is exempt from further environmental review per sequel guideline, Section 15061B3. With that, staff recommendation is that the city council adopt the proposed resolution, extending by one year the temporary outdoor live entertainment program. This completes my report. I'm available for all of your questions.
Thank you very much for that report. Do any of my colleagues have any questions? Councilmember Stu.
So was discussion made on the three-strike program? Is it three violations? Is a violation a strike? Is that how the three strikes work?
What we would do with regard to that is if a temporary use permit holder received their first notice of violation, the first thing we'd do is bring them in and have a discussion with the Old Town Steering Committee. So we wouldn't wait until it got to citations. As soon as you received a notice of violation, we'd bring them in so we could have that discussion.
Any other questions?
No, I think, I think the point of the pilot program was to ensure that we don't bite off more than we can chew, and I think we, we did that with this pilot program. I think it's good to move another year.
Quick question.
Absolutely.
So the pilot program ran for a year. You had two successful applications. How many total applications did you have?
We had a number of applicants apply, several, one of them was not within the downtown core area of the Old Town Specific Plan, so they were not eligible for the program. There were a couple that did not like the limitations in place, specifically the hours of 9:00 p.m. And then others did not like the DJ component. That was kind of there, what they wanted to have as entertainment.
Okay. Do we anticipate any additional applications?
I truly hope so. I know we'll be pushing that on the staff's end. When we discussed this program, when it first started, we were inundated with calls. We expected this to be going off like gangbusters and, you know, trying to fight people off with a stick for entertainment. But unfortunately, when it came live, we had a real interest at first, but then only these two applications came forward.
Go ahead, and I'll.
I do, I do think going forward, oh, this is, we're still asking questions, it's not discussion. Okay, I'll go first. Questions of staff, questions? All right, just one question. What is the cost to apply for the permit?
It is, the city charges $307. When you adopted this program, it was $300. It went up $7 for the, this year's CPI. There, we accept, the application itself costs $307. We take hand-drawn plans. We do not require professional engineering. You can do it, I wouldn't say with crayons, but maybe a little bit sharper than that, a pencil. We'll take that.
Perfect. I think that's an important point to hit on, that the cost isn't overbearing, hopefully. All right.
Can I just say one quick thing?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Could you just go over a little bit what was discussed about, or even brought up possibly with the education on how we can move forward to help them out as far as applying for this and moving forward to make sure they're staying within compliance? I know that myself and Councilmember Schwank was asking about that, so.
Yeah, of course. Staff is always available when we provide, whenever these questions come in or anything is posed to staff on the counter or over the phone. We always make sure we provide the application. We let them know that staff's available at the counter. We have a planner assigned every day, Monday through Friday, 8 to 5, to answer questions. They're also available by phone. I know every staff member hands out a business card when they hand out an application, so they have a direct link to that person who gave it to them. So we try our best to be as forthcoming and as open as we can, short of knocking on doors in Old Town, which I'd be happy to do if this council decided. That's what we'll be doing.
All right, thank you very much. With that, I will open the public hearing. Madam City Clerk, do we have any public comments? With that, I will close the public hearing. And I'm open for discussion. Councilmember Stu, let's start it off.
All right, well, see, I see this program as an opportunity, not only for the businesses that are there currently, but anybody who's thinking of opening a business in Old Town. Because as we know, businesses tend to cycle. And so I think this is just another tool in the toolbox to create the kind of environment someone would want for their restaurant. So, so that's why I'm in favor of this program, is, is to give the merchant or the restaurateur the opportunity to succeed with as many tools as they could possibly have. And that's, that's what I like to see, successful businesses in Old Town. So I definitely want to prove it.
Completely agree.
Councilmember Ron, if I can save, your question was my exact question and Subcommittee as well. And just asking why the applicants, you know, I think we had somewhere around 12 applicants in total, why they didn't follow through, and we only have two. It seems like as of right now, when we spoke to the two different applicants right now that are already there, unless one takes care of some of their fines, the other one is very eager to continue with this and be able to just enjoy the outdoor music that they have set. But yeah, it was, some of the people had moved. Other people said it was a little challenging with the application. I had taken a look at the application, I could fill it out. So, but what's really good is the fact that we do have staff here, like was, that was mentioned, to be able to help along that side. And it was brought up that almost you can use crayons. So there might have been a little bit of a miscommunication or something, maybe something wasn't understood. But that's where we're going to be able to really educate the public, to be able to hopefully move forward if we decide to.
Absolutely. Councilmember Ron?
Yeah, so I, I don't want to stop people from applying for these, you know, in any way. I think it's a good opportunity to grow this, hopefully. I, I know there's been some issues with hours of operation violation, noise violation, and so forth. But I think the noise ordinance thing keeps, you know, based on this meeting and our last meeting, kind of keeps being a little bit of a sticking point. And I, I wanted, hopefully, Mr. Peters, if you could speak just a little bit. You know, we've got this threshold at 70 decibels. But this isn't like, you know, I, I would equate it similar to how we do, you know, speeding enforcement in the city. It's not like it's, you know, 45, and if you're 46, you get an automatic ticket, right? There's leeway and, and understanding of conditions and so forth. So can you explain a little bit? Because I know 70 is the, the rule, but, you know, you're not writing, you know, citations at 71.
Right, I think there's a couple of things we can address. I think if we could have Code Enforcement come up, our new code manager, just to talk about how our officers do the readings, we can talk about that specifically. And then after that, I can address the update to the general plan and how we're going to address the noise element.
Welcome.
Welcome, thank you. Good afternoon. Our process for our decibel reading downtown, the officers actually calibrate their decibel reader before each of their shifts when they go out on Friday and Saturday evenings with the Metro team. The decibel reader is sent to the company for calibration once a year to ensure the accuracy. And then the officer then takes the reading from the nearest public sidewalk or the adjacent property of the establishment per our municipal code section. Minimum of three readings are taken within 30 minutes, and the decibel reader report determines an actual average. So the citation is issued for levels that exceed the sound level standard of 70 dB. So it's an actual average of not a 71 or a 72, but it's over the course of 30 bins.
I appreciate that, and I think that's kind of an important stopping point for the conversation. You know, I don't want to see any more tears on, you know, business owners and folks coming in saying, well, you're just arbitrarily writing citations. And, you know, I've heard lots of stories out there, and, and I don't want this to be a barrier for folks to apply for this program, but understand that, you know, we're creating this environment in Old Town that's hopefully, you know, both an entertainment venue for folks and business growth, but also maintains that sort of family-friendly environment we're all still, still looking for as well. And, and I know that's a difficult, you know, juggling act. With only two permits right now out there, or licenses, I guess, I'm sorry. They're, and they're fairly far away from each other. It's not like there's competition for noise anyway. But I just want to make sure we keep an eye on that, that as more businesses start to apply, I, I equate it to like a noisy restaurant, right? That as, you know, one business adjacent to another starts to do outdoor music or whatever, noise levels will tend to get, and you've seen this in other, you know, Old Town-type areas, noise levels will just artificially increase because you want to hear their music at that restaurant or venue, not the one across the street. And so, you know, managing this, I know if we do get more applications, maybe become a bit of a challenge, but just kind of wanted to be aware of that in the future, and I'm sure you already are, so.
Absolutely, and we are addressing and contacting the businesses downtown as the last Subcommittee meeting, so we're trying to work with them. We actually have a meeting set up with several of the businesses tomorrow.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think it's important to note as well, you know, with the Metro team now, we do more of a proactive approach. So a lot of the businesses are saying, hey, why are you enforcing this now? But prior to the Metro team being here in Old Town, we didn't have the capability or the enforcement officers to really go out and enforce the ordinances that the city had, you know, the sound ordinance, for instance, has been in place since 2006. So now that we do have a proactive enforcement unit with our Metro team, that is probably why we are seeing more of these citations and more of the business complaints on, on the sound ordinance. But I have everything I need for this. Councilmember Schwank?
Yeah, thank you. Just add a couple of things. So really great points, and I think, you know, we're all on the same page. Like, one of the, during Subcommittee, one of the complaints was the cost, but the applicant had, you know, hired an engineer at like $4,000 to do these drawings, and we're like, whoa, like, you don't need to do that, you know? It's $300, so like, maybe crayons, not the best, but colored pencils or something, right? So, so there's that. And then Stu, you brought up the business, the cycling of businesses. So we know it's like Be Good had applied, but they went out of business. There was a couple other businesses that had applied, and, you know, they've gone out of business. So, you know, we're always going to have that, that turnover. You know, I'm, I'm glad to hear, and it feels like, you know, there's a lot of support for maintaining, you know, the, the noise levels down here a little bit, right? You know, one of the establishments had 17 violations before they even had the TUP. It was like, well, we're not targeting you, you just don't have the TUP, you know? So got the TUP, and they, they had 10 after, after that. So a lot to work on, but we didn't envision it as, you know, a live band, drums, percussion, you know, rock concert. It was more guitar, you know, flutes, like that, that lower-key ambiance. And, and to your point, Councilmember Ron, about how, you know, businesses will fight for noise and, and start to crank up, and it, it all adds up really quickly. So that's important. And then Mayor Kalphus, you mentioned, you know, Metro and the Metro Plus with Code Enforcement going out and, and doing these things where, you know, I have the PTSD of, you know, the 2020, 2021, where there were bonfires in parking lots, and it was like total chaos down here. So I'm very thankful for Code Enforcement and the work that they're doing down here. And when, you know, we get complaints, it's, it's a little hard on us. But I know, you know, I support Code, and I, and I want Code Enforcement to know that I think the balance of the council is 100% behind the work that you're all doing because it does make a huge difference for the quality of life and, and for the quality of the business owners down here as well that don't have it. And so while it's challenging, and I think there is some confusion about, you know, the, the, these temporary use outdoor versus the other conversation we had about outdoor live entertainment, which, you know, you have three, three businesses with those grandfathered CUPs. Different conversation, but it's all kind of getting lumped in, into one, sort of music conversation. But I think like the more we can support Code up here, it really sends a message, you know, not to the team here, but to the community as well, it's like, hey, we're a community. We all need to work together. There's a lot of businesses down here, and we all got to get along. And so, you know, my hope is that some of that education component we talked about in Subcommittee, about being more collaborative, about working, going that extra mile, the Temecula way, I think that's going to pay dividends in the long run, so, thank you.
No, well said, and I just want to touch on that, that talking about a thankless job is the Code Enforcement Officers, right? You're just writing citations, but like Councilmember Schwank said, all the Code Enforcement doing is they're enforcing ordinances that this council has either put into place or has not changed. So if there's someone that you want to hold accountable for ordinances that the Code Enforcement is holding the businesses accountable, it is the five of us up here, not the Code Enforcement Officers themselves. Councilmember Ron?
Well, and just, just to be clear too, so we're, we're extending this for one year, which means a year- which means a year from now, we're going to be having the same meeting, same conversation, and talk about the success or, or, you know, potential failure of all of this. So, I think it's a good opportunity for us to hopefully see some growth in this area, but, uh, I guess we'll see on the other side when it comes to, uh, you know, how this rolls out.
Absolutely. All right. Well, this is a shot in the dark, but I will entertain a motion and a second.
Motion.
Second. Moving to second. And that motion is approved unanimously, five to zero. We will move on to item number 18. Introduce ordinances amending titles 5, 8, 16, and 17 of the Temecula Municipal Code related to minor revisions to business license requirements, nuisance abatement, alcohol, or entertainment conditional use permits, accessory structures and setbacks, bicycle parking requirements, barber, beauty shops, energy storage standards, and raceways for signage. Can we have a staff report, please? Welcome back.
Thank you, sir. Good afternoon again, everyone. Uh, this is the, forgive me, this is staff's annual code cleanup ordinance, um, LR250004. Um, the Temecula Municipal Code was originally adopted by City Council in 1990. Since its adoption, the City Council has periodically made amendments to the code to implement state law, implement, uh, council policy, and to improve it, improve its clarity and usefulness. The proposed ordinance before you would amend titles 5, title 8, title 16, and 17 of the Temecula Municipal Code. Jumping right in here, title 5, our single change here, um, section 5.04140A11, uh, we're going to authorize or allow issuance of a city business license prior to the issuance of a state or federal permit as required. This is when a federal, uh, permit requires a local permit for its issuance, we would issue prior to, in that case. Our single change for title 8 would be for nuisance cost accounting, section 8.12120B. It would reduce the timeline of cost recovery for city abatement actions from six to two months. This is an option. It's not required. And then again, our single change for title 16 for urban lot splits or SB9, section 16.59050. It would switch or correct the minimum and maximum width for flag lots. Um, no change to standards. This is just an oopsie when I adopt, when we brought this before you, I made a mistake, and I'm here to correct it. Um, jumping into title 17, um, administration of zoning, table 17.03010. This is going to require existing CUPs to comply with chapter 17.09 alcohol and chapter 9.10 entertainment license when an applicant chooses to amend their CUP. We're not going after anyone making them change anything. This is if they choose to amend their CUP on their own. Then they would be required to comply with the new municipal code. Okay, uh, home occupation permit, 17.04030. This is going to stipulate that client-based businesses, think, uh, piano teachers, operate on a one-on-one basis utilizing non-consecutive appointments. This is a common practice already. We're just codifying that practice. Okay, residential district, table 17.06030. We're going to add footnote 16 referencing existing standards for religious institutions built in a residential zone. These are existing standards already in the code. We're just adding that little connection there to it with that note. Okay, accessory structures, subsection, I'm sorry, section 17.06050D, and we're going to clarify that accessory structures be single-story. We don't need two-story sheds. No change to the height. They'd still be 16 feet. Okay, accessory structures, table 17.06050A would clarify that storage and utility enclosures includes sheds, just expanding that definition to include shed. No change to standards. Parking requirements, section 17.24040. Um, we're going to add bike parking requirements for multifamily development. Um, this is not in there presently, um, but we are going to require, um, bicycle parking at a rate of one space per five units or 10% of vehicle spaces, whichever is greater. And they can either use class one lockers or class two racks. Okay, um, schedule of permitted uses, table 17.08030. This is going to remove personal service shops as a permitted use in the light industrial zoning district. Um, personal service shops, think, um, hairstylists, barbers, tattoos. These are commercial businesses that belong in commercial, um, centers. They're chewing up a lot of our light industrial spaces, and then our fair and peers land use economic development study shows that we are, um, short of industrial space, and we'll continue that moving forward. So, we're just realigning commercial with commercial there. Okay, um, schedule of permitted uses, sticking with that, um, table 17.08030. We're going to add footnote 17 requiring sports and recreation and training facilities to complete a parking analysis. We've had a lot of pickleball courts, trampoline parks, batting cages come in into our industrial parks, and then they're unfortunately cause parking problems. This, prior to their entitlement, would hopefully prevent those problems. Okay, uh, proposed change to class four entertainment license, 17.09040. Um, we're going to correct last call to state 112959. This is a correction only, no change to last call in the code presently. I believe it says 102959. I get another typo on my part. Okay, getting there. Energy storage standards, 1710020U. Um, we're going to require that, amend the standards to require all such enclosures to, um, be integrally designed with anti-dumping features. This is similar to all of our other, um, enclosures in the city. Okay, prohibited signs, uh, 1728040 would prohibit exposed raceways for all signage. This is a common practice. You don't see raceways within the city, um, but this is just codifying that common practice. Okay, and then sticking with signage, um, 1728070A, we're going to prohibit individual businesses from advertising on community benefit features. So, when they develop a nice corner and they put a fountain or some nice landscaping, it will prevent advertising of single businesses. They're meant to be community benefits, not advertising sources. Okay, our last, uh, change for title 17 is going to be our definitions, 1734010. Um, we're going to add definition for auto salvage, impound, and wrecking yard all under one. And then we're going to add a definition for storage, utility, shed enclosure, um, which would require no plumbing. And then, um, vending machine, we're going to add a definition for that to require it be indoor only. We don't want to add any attractive nuisances to our stores. And then we're going to amend the definition for personal service shop. This is just bringing our outdated definition in line with our, um, uh, more modern specific plans and the, uh, evolution of personal service shops. Think of it as non-medical enhancements. Okay, and where we've been, um, this ordinance was presented to the PC Municipal Code Maintenance Subcommittee on April 2nd, 2025 with Commissioners Haglen Watson, the City Council General Plan Update Subcommittee with Mayor Kalfas and Councilmember Ron, and then the Planning Commission adopted Resolution Number 2025-21 recommending adoption on June 4th, 25. Sequel determination, staff has determined that this ordinance is exempt from further environmental review per section 15061B3, and staff recommends that the City Council introduce and read by title only the proposed ordinance. This completes my report, and I am available for your questions.
Thank you very much. Any questions from my colleagues?
I have two questions, if you can. Uh, number one on the bike storage, if you can just put that one back up one more time, please. Thank you. If you could just go on a little bit more about what that looks like, uh, is there a certain time that they have to get it done, or people grandfathered in, or is this for new people coming in? What does that look like?
Great question. Yeah, this is, would be for new entitlements coming forward. We're not going to come back to everywhere and say you need to install these, um, bike lockers or parking bike racks, anything like that. This would be for new development coming in.
Okay, perfect. That was great. And then the last one was the beautification one you had shown, like there was a lot, like a corner lot piece. Excellent. So, can you go into a little bit more detail of what that looks like? Because I know businesses will put up, and I would assume you're talking about signs like, hey, we're having a sale or some things this, is that kind of?
Not so much. There's, um, a community feature, um, at the intersection of Rancho, California and Ynez, um, that was recently kind of converted, we'll say, from a community feature into more of an advertising platform, and we're trying to prevent that in the future. It wasn't crystal clear in the code, and we want to just make sure there's no ambiguity in it.
I'm sorry. Okay, so more just signage, is anybody putting signage? Because we've seen that. That's my quei- that's where I know exactly where that is, obviously. So, okay.
We would prevent all signs.
So, what would that look like if businesses or individuals put signs there? Who's, who's responsible? Is it the property owner, or is it the city that comes in with code to remove it? What does that look like?
Uh, obviously, the property, uh, management company would be available to that for their property, but if not, they would receive a code enforcement, uh, visit and, uh, see how friendly we can be.
Wonderful. Thank you very much for your time and help.
Always very friendly. Councilmember Ron?
Uh, can you pull up the, uh, one on the, uh, energy storage real quick? Sorry, my screen just turned off. Can, can you explain that one just a little bit further?
Yes. Um, some of these energy storage facilities, they're not the big ones that are going up around that are many, many, many megawatts. Some of them are smaller entities that are kind of being added on to industrial, um, centers that are taking advantage of some of their excess solar. Um, and what they're doing is it essentially looks like a oversized trash enclosure, and we're trying to prevent it being used as a trash enclosure with dumping, human access, trespassing, things like that, because what's in there is a little bit more valuable and potentially dangerous than a trash receptacle.
Okay. And, I mean, just from a, a code and I think public safety, uh, fire safety perspective, are, is there any signage required of these facility? Because they're a very unique fire if they do occur.
Yes.
But if you're sort of disguising them as an, you know, trash, you know, something that looks fairly benign, how, how are we tracking that for, for fire?
Um, they would, fire would be involved in any entitlement reviewed for it, um, whether that be the construction drawings or the, uh, planning application. Um, they would be involved in that. Um, and then the, uh, municipal code itself has substantial requirements for any facility proposing this in our supplemental development standards.
Well, I guess more importantly is if, if you're rolling up on an incident that includes the fire inside of an enclosed structure like this, and their folks responding to that incident aren't aware that that's a battery storage inside there, how, how do they know that it's battery storage? Because it's a, it's a very different incident to, to show up to. And, and, you know, we don't, I, I, we've seen this on a number of instances, especially in the urban interface, just not aware that that's going on. There's a whole safety issue and, and health and safety issue associated with that. So, I was just kind of curious. Are we contemplating any changes, or have they had any discussions on that to make fire more aware of the, what's in those contained areas?
We require signage for such. They are not very prevalent, so in an emergency situation, they might get overlooked. Um, obviously, we can have further discussions with fire to see what would be best for them to identify, what would be the best tool for them to know, whether that's a GIS tool or some other type of option for them to understand prior to arriving.
Yeah. Can we just work on that conversation a little bit in the future here? Appreciate that. Thanks.
We like big colorful signs in case, uh, you need any input. All right. Any other questions of staff? With that, I will open the public hearing. Madam City Clerk, do we have any public comments? I will close the public hearing, and I will entertain discussion and/or a motion and a second.
Move approval.
Second.
That has been moved and seconded. And item number 18 passes unanimously, five to zero. We will move on to departmental reports, receive and file. Presentations, external, we do not have any tonight. Madam City Clerk, do we have any more public comments on non-agenda items?
Yeah.
All right. Seeing no more public comments. Do we have any items for future City Council agendas? All right. Seeing none from my colleagues. City Manager report?
Nothing further, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. City Attorney report?
Um, yes, I have a report tonight. Um, we had a closed session tonight on a real property matter, and in that closed session, the council set the fair market value of the property interest to be acquired, and the council authorized the, uh, staff to make an offer to the owners based on that offer, and the vote there was five to zero.
Thank you very much, Mr. City Attorney. All right. With that, I will adjourn this meeting. It says here our next one is Tuesday, August 12th, 2025. Is the hearing on August 5th a public hearing, or is that a City Council?
It is a City Council workshop.
All right. Well, we have a City Council workshop on August 5th, but we will see you back in here in these chambers on August 12th, 2025 at 3:00 p.m. And with that, to honor Ozzy Osbourne, I will end it with mama, I'm coming home.